If it's the lowest price, that's the way to go. We want to focus on a town matter. We don't need the state to come in and tell the towns what they're doing right or doing wrong. I think all those other cities and towns, you know, might have thought that too. I mean, every city and town has their specific concerns, there's specific projects, there's sewer programs, and I think that's where the town solicitor, our town manager, and our town finance director has gotten to this point. Now, again, I'm prepared to go ahead and get this thing going. I don't see any reason why not to personally, as one councilperson that's heard this long enough. And I don't know if we're ready for a vote, Mr. Waters, or not.
I just have one more thing.
Let me ask Mr. Waters, and maybe he can answer my question. Mr. Waters, are we ready or not?
That's not up to me.
I understand that, but I mean, are you comfortable putting this to the council?
I am comfortable with Citron Cooperman and their qualifications. I am comfortable with the price that they gave us.
Okay, and Mr. Tebow is also?
The price that they gave us is based on hourly rate, not on a long song.
How much times, how much they cost, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, in addition to that, they've just brought to my attention that really what they perform is a professional service, and as we know, professional services aren't covered under Chapter 56. However, I felt it prudent to come before the council and put it out there in this manner so the council has input and is aware of everything that's going on. And if the council does not feel like this is the appropriate way to go, then please provide me with guidance on how you as a council as a body would like to go. If there's three votes for this, then there's three votes for it. If there's three votes against it, there's three votes against it. However, the majority of the council feels is necessary to pursue this. I am comfortable with this firm looking into the sewer program as they laid out in their proposal. I brought this proposal before council. I mentioned it in my September 29 report to the town council, as well as at the last town council meeting, I believe I said I was going to go look for firms to bring back before the town council. In between that time, I also asked for feedback from the town council regarding this. And tonight, I'm asking for input into this proposal. So, if there are specific things, and I did mention specifically in my request to Citron Cooperman that they look for criminal matters to present a forensic aspect to the review that they're doing, but by no means, we're not committed to accepting the proposal. That's why it's being voted on.
Mr. President, anybody? Yes, okay, Mrs. Carlson, I think first, then Mr. McGee, then I have one. Go ahead.
In the list of cities and towns that you've worked with, have you worked with any sewer issues, any sewer programs? Because it's a nice list, but I don't know what you've done for these cities and towns.
Most of the work that we've done for the cities and towns that relate to sewers is really auditing the enterprise one. It's really understanding enterprise one, understanding the assessment process, understanding the building process, understanding and auditing the construction costs and the funding that they receive, whether it be grant funding or whether it be, you know, the assessments that they fund.
Now, and I just want to ask, can the Senator address the auditor general idea, or is that something that would take way longer and we wouldn't get answers quite as quickly, Senator? Do you know anything about that?
Can we answer that question now?
Yeah, I'm asking, can you answer that?
Yes, if you want to answer that question in general.
Thank you. To your question, the General Assembly, I'll give you a quick response. The all eight members of the delegation have drafted a letter, and all eight members will sign that letter and ask the auditor general to conduct a forensic audit. And that's up to the auditor general from looking at our letter, our request, and to move forward. And again, that's going to be the state coming in and auditing a specific issue that concerns this town. And the auditor general has conducted many audits throughout this state, throughout state agencies, so it's not something new for him, but he has to make that decision from looking at the evidence that all eight members of the delegation are going to present to him. And we'll share a copy, by the end of this week, he will have a copy of that letter when it is sent to the auditor general. And that's a process that we feel as members of the delegation, all eight of us, are going to move forward with.
So, you are going to do that?
Absolutely. You've already got five out of eight signed on to the letter, and we're going to expect the other three members when we reconvene at the State House tomorrow to conduct that, finish up that letter.
And I have to say, much as I don't like the state stepping on anybody, any of the municipalities' toes, I think if they can do the job, and they can do it, and it's not going to cost the town anything, in a timely manner, and I don't know what their timing would be, I think it's something that we need to consider before we make any decisions on hiring the firm. And we would tell them what we're looking at, what the problems have been. I don't see why we wouldn't wait until we had that information.
That's a process of we taking upon us.
Right, I understand.
We represent this community. We are elected members of this community, so we feel that all eight members, after we have the town council meeting here on December 18, we feel in hearing from our constituents regarding this whole entire sewer program, we've seen enough evidence, that we're bringing our letter forward, and the auditor general has to make that decision by reading that letter, and again, he'll make the decision to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Senator. I know Councilwoman LaBosse has another question before you.
Do you happen to know another town or city that the auditor general has actually ordered? I have an estimate I can find out. I just didn't, I've never heard, I've never heard the auditor general ordering, auditing another town or city.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Senator. Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I also, if they want to do, if the state wants to step in and do a forensic audit, fine, but we still have a responsibility. They're not going to answer all the questions that this firm is going to answer and do all the research and everything. If the state wants to, I don't want the state, you know, to get involved in that. I mean, they want to commit, fine, and it's not going to cost us anything, but we have a lot of other issues just in a forensic audit that have to be taken care of. And I'm completely comfortable with this firm coming in, looking at all the issues and the problems, and presenting us with a report on it, and if the town manager suggests that we approve it, I'm all for it. The councilwoman have been asking for this for a long time. It's a great start to get going. Let's get moving on this. Let's find out our problems, and let's work towards getting them solved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Mr. Gorm, one more question. Did you say on this resolution, it's okay to vote on or not? I kind of was getting messages on what, the chapter or not chapter?
The state law authorizes municipalities to do this through the MPA. The state law is Title 37, Chapter 2, Section 56, which allows municipalities to avail themselves of the benefits of the MPA, the Master Price Agreement administered by the State Department of Administration. And our charter also says essentially the same thing in Chapter 56, that we can avail ourselves of joint pricing agreements. So, really, the town manager was correct. For professional services, it's not really necessary to do this. It says, except in the case of professional services, and I would respectfully submit to all of you that this is a professional firm, except in the case we need to go out to bid. So, we don't have to go out to bid for professional services, and there are a variety of reasons for that that we could debate, but the fact is that our ordinance says we don't have to do that. But the town manager did it anyway. He did it anyway, and he examined the bids under the MPA and under the ordinance, and he felt that this was the best deal for the town.
In the state MPA, you're saving us all that time and effort. It's the lowest possible bid through the state, so that saves us a lot of time in that area, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. Wait, excuse me. Glenn, Glenn, you offered to have public comment, and so before we go and do anything, I'd like to hear from the public, I mean.
I did say I consider it, but with all questions asked and the answers coming back, I'm satisfied to not hear from individuals in the public.
I think, yes.
All right, so I'm going to motion.
Well, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, Glenn. We have been, I have been asking for months for this, and I, no one who listened to me. Now, all of a sudden, it comes on the agenda, it's before us, and now you're ramming it down our throats. I mean, I would like, it states right here in their proposal, their references from our governmental clients upon request. We have no, we have no references. I would like to see those. I would also like to see, it says our firm's peer review quality control report is upon, available upon request. I would like to review those documents. And I would like to be able to sit down, and as you know, we all discussed, we need to get this right. What is the rush in voting on something tonight? I mean, I think we need, it's the first time we've seen it, they're here, I mean, we need to get this right. Like I said, it's been months. I couldn't get it on the agenda, then it just magically appeared. I have no idea what happened in three weeks where finally it came on the agenda, but let's not rush it, let's get this right.
All right, we have the opportunity to add anything on we want to speak to these people, to speak to town manager, communicate.
No, no, but if we go and we try and go and add, now we got to all gather again and try and go and write this. Let's go and get this right and give, I mean, there are things in here that the town manager is only going to allow these folks to speak to certain people at a certain time. That shouldn't be the case. They should be able to go and speak to members if we need to in here, and I can't find it right at the moment, I'm sorry. But, I mean, we really, oh, designated by the town manager during scheduled periodic meetings. I mean, we need to make sure that.
Well, that's only reasonable, you said about meeting the town, the town administrator.
I get that, but they should be able to come in and speak to whoever they want.
Absolutely, and I don't think the town manager is going to withhold any opportunity to speak to, but it's going to do it at the convenience of a town manager who is in charge of department heads. I mean, I think it may make a big difference. I think it's a great start.
The bottom line is the council's responsibility to get this right, not the town manager.
We've heard, we've heard from the council, all right? I got a motion, I got a motion to vote.
What about the voter?
I mean, why are we afraid to let them speak? Why can't we have?
I've asked for a motion to second, or do you have another comment?
No, did you ask, we got, Mr. McGee, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, three ayes, two opposed. Next matter. Aye. Next matter is C. Mr. Waters, C. Thank you, Mr. Jeremiah, and the guests, I didn't give your last name again?
Holland Beck.
Holland Beck, thank you for coming out, and we appreciate it.
I have a question for Nick Gorm before we move forward. Since you three oppose this, the resolution says audit, 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 audit. That's not what they're doing. They're doing consulting service, so you need to go and rewrite this resolution.
There's a lot on it.
It's not an audit.
It's consulting services.
So, you voted for an audit, so is that what we're getting now?
Consulting engagement is what they said.
Yes, consulting engagement. So, are we getting an audit or consulting engagement?
Question noted. What do we have in front of us?
I want to make a revision.
We send vote.
That's why I asked if we were ready to go.
Oh, you asked. You need to read, listen. You had the opportunity to do it right, instead you're just rushing it and jamming it down our throats.
Whereas the vendor has given the town a proposal with pricing based on the Rhode Island master, no, sorry, whereas it is determined that Citron Cooperman and Company LLP can perform the required tasks of the audit.
Any other question on what we voted on, or Mr. Waters?
Well, you guys voted on an audit, so fantastic, we're getting an audit. No, this is, they're doing consulting, we need to make sure what they're doing.
Let our town solicitor answer, please. This is.
Well, the vice president was just answering.
There was a question asked of me, Mr. President, Councilwoman Bacon.
Yes.
It does say audit in the resolution. If the audit needs to be changed, I will change it, but.
No, you voted on it.
They approved it.
Excuse me. Councilwoman Bacon asked me if it must be changed, okay? You're right, it's already been voted on, that's correct. And they voted on it as such. You asked me, does it have to be changed? I don't think it does, but if it does, I will let you know, okay? And that's how we'll leave it.
But they voted on an audit, so I hope they understand that.
But that's, that's.
The whole operation.
Does it have to be approved?
They have said an audit is something different than consulting.
All right, so be it. They'll notify you if it has to be changed. All right, C, Mr. Waters, C1. C1.
C1.
Mr. Waters.
So, we have before the town council, we're in the middle of the iCompass Technologies annual contract. This is our vendor that we use for meeting management system, as well as broadcasting our council meetings. We have with us tonight our IT director, who is here to answer.
Mr. Orzika. Good evening, sir, happy new year.
Good evening, sir. I don't know if it's safe to come up here.
I said you're a bigger target.
No, thank you.
What?
Stay right there. They understand, target acquisition, that's our police joke. Go ahead.
This is the renewal of the iCompass entire package. The annual renewal is actually due in another three months, but I wanted, as soon as it came in, I wanted to get it out in front of the council, get it approved. It is continued with the process on what we're doing now, the video, the live streaming, the storage, the meeting management software, all of the aspects of the whole package that we moved over to. There were a couple of minor additions that are with this that we haven't kicked on yet because it's a process, getting the training and getting everybody up to speed on it. And unfortunately, during this process, we're losing our town clerk, the person who does it. So, instead of training her on these last two items on, he had the action tracking on the pot track tracker, as well as the aqua tracker. Those two will be done once we have a new town clerk, instead of wasting time on training and then retraining. It's a lot involved on the training on this stuff, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to waste my time, their time, or for that matter, Mr. George's time. But it's annual price, we don't have an option. The only other thing we could do with this is go out to bid again and kill everything we've done and stock clean, and I really don't want to do that. So, this is more or less a mandatory, but because of the price on it, I didn't want to just do it. I felt it should come up if I'm accountable and get authorization for the $18,000 change.
Can I, I know that I've had several taxpayers say how great it is to be able to watch the meetings, the only problem is the sound, the audio is a problem, but they've been really happy having it.
The audio should, you should have noticed the difference in the audio. Tonight's sounds much better as well. Last meeting we had, we had a different setup, and I had a soundboard, and all of these things, we're tweaking while we're getting it set up, getting it configured the right way. That's why I'm still here at every meeting, instead of the town manager kicking this thing on and off at the end. Once it's perfect, I'll be happy with it. We're going to be moving it next week over to the corner. All the equipment that we need is going to be on the side. We're going to shorten up the wires, eliminate some of the duplication that we've got, and I've got a couple of people that have emailed me today, and I asked them to respond back tomorrow on how they found the audio today. So, we'll see if there's any issues with it. What I've checked already on the testing this morning, this afternoon, it does seem better than what I was getting, so we'll see what happens.
And the other question I had was, how are we doing on the videoing and streaming for the other meetings, you know, school committee, zoning, planning, sewer subcommittee, all the other components? Obviously, I don't expect land trust and conservation because they meet across the street, and they're over here, but.
The original contract was for zoning, planning, town council, school committee, and then a fifth one. That's what we were based on. We can add others into it. The issue is, there's an extensive amount of training, there's the equipment. I'll be honest, I've got some concerns with some people with too many hands, too many cooks, and, I mean, something as simple as, I mean, we've got laptops, there's a couple of thousand dollars that's involved. We've got a black box that does the encoding, there's another $1,500. I've got all this equipment around that has to be played with. I have problems with my mics on certain committees and moving things and twisting, and I'm just, I'm afraid if I move it down into some of the smaller committees, I'm going to have problems with equipment, and I'm going to be constantly replacing equipment. With that said, if the council wants it, it will be down along. I will get it all down there, and we'll just have to replace the stuff as it gets broken. But I do find, I do have issues some days with equipment, and the equipment being left out. You see what this looks like when you come back in after certain meetings?
Well, I think it's the zoning, the planning, and the sewer committee and town council are the four that really need to be.
We will be, we're going to be there on Wednesday for Wednesday meeting. For high school. I'm hoping I can get that to go out live. I'm really going to be working on that. One of the problems is, we've got to basically set up for an FDM on Wednesday because we need, we need sound system, we need projection system. I need everything that we have on an FDM, and I've only got a couple of hours to get it set up. They're only allowing me in there at 3:00 in the afternoon. Yeah, and I've got to get everything cleared out of there until this is over, which I suspect is going to be somewhere around midnight. So, I've got, all that to get done. We're going to, like I said, I'm going to attempt, Cody and I are going to attempt to get this out live. Hopefully, we will. We do have internet in there, and I should be able, as long as I've got internet in there, I should be able to get this to do a live stream out of there, so anybody that can attend will be able to watch it. And worst case, it will be video, and it would be available the next day if I can't get it live that night.
Good.
So, we will be working on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? My question, Mr. Waters, it says discussion and/or action. Is any action needed at the council regarding this matter, or is it something where just green lighted?
It's part of the consent agenda, so.
Okay, are we taking individual? Why don't we take it individually then? Consent, do I have a motion, I guess, to approve this cost for iPass? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Congrats. All right, C2, next, Mr. Waters.
C2 is a draft letter to Representative News in response to the letter that he sent to town council. It's attached as page.
58?
Yes.
Okay.
To your agendas. It's what was requested by the town council to be brought forward from the legislative meeting. And this is just a draft, you can edit how you see fit.
Okay, my question, I see the word, I circled it, wait until the audit. Mr. Gorm, should that be changed, or does it have to be, or does it not really have to be on the letter? Well, it's the second paragraph about the seventh line down.
And the third line also says perform a full audit.
Okay, yeah.
See that right there?
All right, third one. All right, second paragraph again. All right, you see it? Do we, do we adjust the letter?
The definition of audit is an official inspection of an individual's or organization's accounts, typically by an independent body. There is no doubt in my mind that that is what Citron Cooperman is doing. I just, I don't know how you could call it anything else.
They did.
All right.
So, and so I think the resolution is proper. I've had time to look up and examine the word audit, and I think it's proper in this letter as well.
Okay, all right. Yes, I haven't answered a motion yet, but discussion?
Okay, and also, twice here it's called the sewer system. I would think it should be sewer program. And also, who wrote the letter and who had input into this specifically? Did Brandon?
I wrote the letter. I wrote the letter, and.
You have to have paragraphs.
Well, this.
I had my red pencil up.
This is becoming, this is becoming.
Oh, a draft, it doesn't say draft.
Nomenclature night at the town council. So, I put system, if you want to, what did I say, system?
Sewer system.
Okay, I've always thought of it as a system, but if you want to call it something else, I, it's your vote. Right, so, you can call it a lot of things, but I thought system was suitable, but I'm.
Sewer system program?
I'm just making suggestions.
Do you want to add program? We got a sewer system program?
Yeah, break mine.
Sewer program.
Sewer program. Okay, all right, motion to change the word system in the third paragraph, second last line, to program versus system. Do I have a motion to change it to program? Do I have a second to change it from system to program?
We need to vote on this? He wasn't serious, you know? I don't think Graham was serious about it, takes three votes to change the word. It's a draft.
Right, so, go ahead and finalize it, and we can sign it. Is that next meeting?
Can I ask why we're even doing this?
Because they asked for a response. We heard it on December 18.
Right.
That had not responded. This will be.
Where's the original letter? Oh, we don't have it, do we? We have no original letter.
We'll send it to all eight of our representatives, two senators, six reps.
Why are we all signing it?
Because they all signed it minus Representative Nardalilo, when we got, and that was back a while ago.
So, can somebody tell me what this actually says in English? Because this is, I'm sorry, Nick, but it's kind of, I look at it and I read it, and I thought it was a contradictory.
Well, I can summarize what the intent of the letter was. The intent of the letter is to inform the General Assembly delegation for Calvary that we are undertaking a very substantive examination, audit, if you will, of our sewer program, if you will. And it stands to reason that we all wait until we get the result of that, the report, before we put in legislation or to do anything. I don't think anyone on this council would disagree with that, so that's all it is. It's just a.
All right, well, that's.
No, no, isolation takes. Why would we tell them not to do anything?
Okay, that's a lie. You have five names down, and we wanted, I personally, wanted to respond back to them because they.
That's polite.
It is polite, and again, although verbally we told them no, they asked for our letter. And this will be the letter, and whoever wants to sign it, signs it. All right, now, Mr. Gorm, is it ready to be drafted and signed, or do we get this later in the mail, Mr. Waters, or what? How is that going to happen? Once we take a vote, if we change it again?
Well, the only other thing which, it says expects to appoint a reputable. It seems that we have appointed Citron Cooperman. And that's, in this point, the town has appointed Citron Cooperman to perform.
The third line, the second.
All right, town expects to appoint. All right, so that'll be changed, all right? And I ask that it get drafted, Mr. Gorm, Mr. Waters, and then it'll appear before the council to either sign it or not sign it. But I want it sent, okay?
We'll change.
We change it with the program, and that not expects to appoint, has been appointed, and whether, let's leave the audit because you gave us the excellent Webster's definition, all right? And then, as soon as we can get it, whether it's next council meeting, the 22nd. And council people will be welcome to sign it and or not sign it, okay? All right, C3, Mr. Waters.
In your packets, you have a report of the emergency purchase of a Dodge Hunter engine that I authorized through Section 56-18, emergency purchases in the town. 56-18, once an emergency purchase is complete, requires that the town manager issue a report to the council. This report is included in your packets.
Okay, we have it in front of us. I guess, I wrote down C3 in the top corner, it's page 59 and page 60. I guess that was just an inadvertent left off on C3, but page 59 and page 60 in our package, we all have in front of us. package, we all have in front of us. Any questions or comments outside of it just a report?
Yes, it's correct.
It's a report, does anybody have a question?
I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, that's why I asked the question.
Thank you, thank you, Glenn. Okay, I wanted to know why this constituted an emergency. I don't, this is that big white van that's parked out there sometimes, where I see driving in and out? And it's used for maintenance tools?
Building engines, etc.
And all that stuff, right? So why was this an emergency?
So this was an emergency because the van had been out of order for quite some time, a couple of months. It was needed by the department, they were using an alternative piece of equipment to move their tools and other things around that was not lockable. And the van was towed to the Rhode Island Truck Center because it was the closer, it's the only known place that works on the diesel engine in the state of Rhode Island.
Now, this has a Mercedes engine?
Correct.
So you didn't call Inskip and see if Inskip, who sells Mercedes, would work on this truck? They sell vans.
They do not perform the required repair that was needed.
How, oh, Bald Hill Dodge, did you contact them?
I...
I did.
Okay.
And yes, they do work on it, and they work, and also Inskip. And I did contact Ryder where it was purchased. If it had been leased, we could have brought it back there, but we are not, there are other mechanics that can work on it.
Well, I'm sure there are. But I was instructed by my Public Works Director that the reason we took it to Rhode Island Truck Center was for this specific type of engine that this van, it's not a regular unleaded gasoline engine.
Exactly, yeah, they actually are selling them at Inskip right now, so they have them there. They know how to work on them.
When I went on the manufacturer's website, I was able to pull up the fact that Rhode Island Truck Center, as well as the Connecticut one, and I believe there might be one up in northern Massachusetts, I don't recall exactly, worked on this.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, so, I know I asked her, I asked some questions, but I didn't get, I didn't have answers back today about this particular van, but we purchased it in 2014, it had 105,000 miles on it. How long, and I know I've got Greg's questions. Was it, was it an issue that we just haven't maintained the vehicle, that it had this major issue now? I mean, that's a lot of money.
So, and, and the responses I sent to you at 3:30 to your questions...
3:30 is a little late. Sorry, I didn't see it.
Day of the meeting is a little late, too.
Sorry?
Day of the meeting is a little late, too.
I know.[1734.82]